Puppy rolling.
Let's do it.
Welcome to the June meeting of the zoning board of appeals town of Lloyd, please rise for your pledge of allegiance.
Phil, if you would, please.
My pledge is to defy the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you everyone, if you could all put your cell phones to vibrate. I forgot to do, so I'm gonna do it right now. Alright, there's no smoking, exits are in the back of the room. Get right into it.
We're smoking, that's good.
New business, Mark Penzella, area variance five, Lisa Drive, SBL ninety-five point two dash seven dash twenty-nine, applicant is seeking an area variance of five points, or seven point five feet for a side yard setback. Come on up, let us know what you're doing, just get to that microphone, turn it on.
Got any pictures?
We haven't gotten there yet.
I have a whole file here.
Jumping the gun.
I don't know if they have it.
Have a seat.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know, I left my cellphone in the car, I didn't know what the, the application was here.
No, I, um, Sarah, Sarah had sent it out earlier, um, you, you supplied us with some pictures, um, and a diagram.
I did.
Um, just give us kind of a rundown of.
Ultimately, during the heart of COVID, April in, in two thousand twenty, uh, when all the gyms were closing down, I built something for my wife and I to, she does her little bit of yoga and I work out and stuff like that, so. We built it, unfortunately, I'm going through a divorce right now, and so therefore I'm having to sell the house, so in order to sell the house, I reached out to Anthony and, uh, I went and showed him what I did. And, um, unfortunately, it's a fifteen foot setback off the property line and I'm at seven and a half feet, so I offered to, uh, take it down. And, um, at the same token, he said, well, let's, let's apply, let's try for the permit, let's try for the variance, so I, uh, I applied for the, I paid for the permit and then once we divulged it a little bit deeper, then we realized it was the, it was over the two hundred and sixty square feet and it was the setback. So I applied for the variance, I paid for the variance and, um, it's just a conversation, uh, when I talked to Anthony, then I vacated the premise, so it's completely empty, um, six weeks now. And, um, just for the hell of it, I posted it on Facebook to, um, anybody who wants to buy it.
The shed.
Yeah, for five thousand dollars, I have forty people that want it.
So you might not even need to be here.
You may not even need this.
Well, I would have taken it down, but at the same token, you know, it's same to, I am in the process of selling the house, so therefore it does require a nice asset in, in, in the sale of the house. So at the same token, I'm at the fork in the road right now and that's why I kind of held off on everything, waiting for this moment.
What's the shed built on?
I have it on, uh, only because I'm cut right in the middle of, uh, a red maple tree and the row of pine trees that are off to the left-hand side. So there, as you can see, it's cut right in there, um, because of the vines that are going left and right from the pines or from the red maple, I covered everything, I dug everything out and I did like, probably eight to ten to twelve inches of stone. And I have six by sixes, all surrounding everything, and everything's built on the six by sixes and it's concrete infilled on the inside.
So it's just, actually it's just sitting on the pad?
It's, no, it's on the six by sixes.
Sarah, I think he, there's a, there's a diagram, yeah, there's a diagram of, uh, of.
Yes.
Yeah, oh.
Oh, right.
Right there.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So it really can't, it can't be moved, obviously, to the right, I would have to take the tree down, to the left, it's closer to the property, so like I said, it just fits snugly right in there, it's all stick built. Um, like I said, it's been there for four years, there's not a crack in the, in the, in the sheet rock, I mean, I built it myself, it's.
How far is your neighbor away from it?
I think they're seventy feet away from the property line, so therefore seventy plus seven and a half, eighty or seven feet.
But typically, typically what we concern ourselves with is, um, access and, uh, maintenance.
Of course.
Um, so seven and a half feet, well, not ideal, um. It's doable, it's not three feet, four feet, y- you could paint the shed, you could do whatever, um. The row of pine trees.
Right.
Are they on your property or your neighbor's property?
My property.
They're on your property, okay.
There's a stream, if you go up into the deed, uh, the deed, uh, the, whatever the.
Site plan.
Site plan, yes.
Can you go to the site plan, please, Sarah?
I'm sorry.
Down, bring the page down, just, nope, the other way, there you go.
As you can see, you see.
Okay, so the, the trees are on.
My side.
Okay. And it's behind the house line, right, so there's not an issue there. Um. Okay, I mean, it, we, we'd have to set a public hearing, we, it, it's, it's time.
It's vacant, it's, like I said, it's sitting vacant, you know what I mean, it's so, therefore, I'm not, you know, like I said, it's so, it's, it's not like anybody can occupy it or someone can get hurt, you know.
Right, I, I, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna convey to you that it's time, it's not something that's gonna happen right away, so if this is, if a sale is pending due to this shed.
Right.
You know.
Right.
It, it, it's gonna, it's gonna put you behind the eight ball, but I mean, if you're not, if you don't have a bunch of people jumping down your throat to buy the house because of the shed.
Right.
I just wanna let you know that it's not gonna happen tonight.
No, I get it.
So.
I figured this is introductory and I, yeah.
Right, informational, um.
You need to get building for the shed.
I don't know, I, I, I apply for one now.
Yeah, man, I'll tell you, that rearview mirror is clear as hell, isn't it? Um, so, I, I, I mean, we'd set a public hearing, I, I could see a few things, um. To me, it seems like it's built very well, um, and it's more than just a shed that could be moved easily. The tree would be a consideration, uh, I, I would almost say we'd put stipulation as, uh, vegetative barrier in perpetuity on the property line. Um. Because it is close, there's already vegetation there, um, and if you do sell the house, the people that buy it, I don't want them to clear cut it and have it that close to the neighbors, um, you know.
What mechanicals you have inside the building?
I have lights.
It's lights.
Yeah, and, uh, and there's mini split. It's actually not a authentic mini split, you know, they make the air conditions, like a wall, it's like a wall unit air conditioner. That gives off heat electric.
Yep, yep.
And, and air conditioning.
Okay.
So I did, at the time when I did speak to Anthony, I did have, uh, when I was, when we filed for the permit, I took your, uh, your sheet and I had scheduled an electrical inspection and, but, and we kind of put everything on pause till, till.
Right, so. What I think, what I think you should do for the next meeting, we'll, we'll set up a public hearing for the next meeting, um. You got, you have pretty good pictures from the front, I'd like pictures from the back.
Of course.
And alongside of it, so we can see what the neighbor's property looks like, you know, kind of put a flag where your property line is, just something visible.
Something, okay.
That we can see where the, where the shed is relation to the property line and what kind of vegetation is there, um.
I do have it on my phone, but, well, I, I'll, it'll be.
Okay. Yeah, for tonight, this is informational, this is to set the public hearing, to get the ball rolling, you know.
With those, with that row of pine trees, you, even from the neighbor's house, I mean, you'll see it, but it's, you know.
But it's blocked from view shed, and that, that's, because it's a variance, we wanna, we wanna give the least relief.
Yeah.
That we can.
Of course, thank you.
Um. So, does anybody have anything else they think they'd need from the applicant?
No.
At next month's meeting, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
So moved, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so, I'll come with a couple more pictures.
Yep, couple more pictures, a couple of flags, so we can kind of see.
From the back and from the, from the road, from the road to.
Now, the only thing I could do is, because it's, it's, it's not a perfectly straight property line, I know when, when I was with Anthony, there was a set number from the corner of my garage. To whatever it was, twenty, whatever it was, forty-six feet or whatever it was, I have it written on my.
You got the survey map?
Yeah, I got the survey map, right, so I can do that, but at the same token, it's, I can only do that one, cause I can, I know for a fact I can mark that one, but for me to try to get to the backside of it because of the slight angle of the property.
So, so where did you, where did you generate the seven point five feet?
Right there, so if you look at, if, even though you can barely see the house.
Yeah, the faint, yep.
Yes, so there, there's, there's a hard number on, on the.
From, so you located, you locate, using the house as a reference point, you used the corner of the house over to the theoretical property line and you measured back.
Correct, so I took.
So do the same exact thing, where the theoretical property line is, put a flag.
Yes.
And then put a tape measure from the flag to the building, take a couple pictures, just so we kind of get a good orientation of where it is and what the view shed's gonna be from the neighbor.
Okay, so it's more of the frontal than, than.
The front and, and the side and.
I'll get a.
The, the more information you can provide.
Sure.
Smoother the process goes.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Easy.
We'll see you in a month.
Okay, one month.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I'll get an email, yeah.
It's, uh, one month from today.
It's the second, it's second Thursday.
I mean, I, I'll get an email just like I did for this one.
Yeah.
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Okay, thank you guys.
Write that down for the next guy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, new business, Vineyard Portfolio, use variance nineteen dash twenty-five Vineyard Avenue, SBL eighty-eight point sixty-nine dash three dash five, applicant is seeking a use variance for two first floor apartments in a CB zone.
Hello.
How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Not too bad, I guess, so, give us the rundown, tell us.
Okay, so the, the client just purchased this building that was left by an estate, obviously it's not in very good condition, um, there is a total of.
Back up just a second, or, tell us who you are and.
Okay, my name is Nicole Rivera, I'm here on behalf of Vineyard Portfolio, I'm actually a paralegal with my own company, Elite Paralegal, and they hired me to come on their behalf, I do real estate work with them.
Okay, do we have, do we, we do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they have.
He has a holiday, he's on building, he might be here next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
No, we did everything correct, yes.
Alright.
Um, the building is a total of six units, um, four ups, on the upstairs levels, and there's two on the bottom levels, those are currently zoned as commercial. Our client is trying to get that, those bottom two to be residential, and in that area, there's very limited parking if it was going to be a commercial space, um, there would not be enough parking, there's no sidewalk there for it to be commercial availability. Um, and it doesn't seem like a very beneficial area for commercial, the other properties in the neighborhood are also residential, so they would like to make those bottom two commercial u- units now into residential to rent them out. They do have other rentals in the town of Lloyd that they've been very successful with, um, so on, on that avenue, I don't see any issues to make it, their, their work is immaculate. And to make, to make the six units and that way there'll be six livable units for the members of the community.
Okay, so, a use variance is much more difficult to get than an area variance.
Okay.
As you may well know, um, what you'd have to show is you'd have to show a financial hardship, so, how long has the applicant owned this property?
Uh, they just bought it on, yeah, it's been less than a year, September fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three, they just bought the property.
Okay, so what they're gonna need to do, um, is show hardship.
Okay.
So have they had that listed as a commercial rental?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to provide us with information saying that they can't get a reasonable return on their investment. Using it as a use that's approved or allowed in that zone.
Okay.
Which may be fairly difficult for someone who just bought it, because there is absolutely a financial gain, or they wouldn't have bought it, so they're gonna have to provide that.
Okay.
Um, they're also gonna have to provide why their circumstance is unique to the zone or unique to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, when you say that, well, there's a lot of other buildings in the area that have apartments and, so then this is not unique, this is the same as other buildings in the area. So you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to show that it's a unique situation to the, to the area, to the zone.
Okay, understood.
Um, what I think we're gonna do is I'll reach out to our attorney.
Mm-hmm.
And have him pre- prepare kind of a packet, it's sort of a cookie cutter thing that we, that we do for use variances, cause they're, they're much more difficult to get, um. He'll reach out to you and Sarah, you have her information and the actual applicant.
Yeah, I have her email.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll reach out to Paul and have him put together the same packet he's done, it's cut and paste, um, to kind of tailor it for you and for your situation. To give you kind of a guidance of what you need to do, obviously, like, like we've said, use variances are very difficult, our, it's not like an area variance, our hands are tied.
Right.
Um, on what we can grant.
Okay.
I, I do understand this area in this zone and. I think our next tri board meeting, we should bring it up, that this is, this, this zone for this area just doesn't make sense. Right, Anthony, I mean.
It's a strange location.
What, what's your input, then this really doesn't have anything technically to do with you, but every building down there is the same thing, it's, your, your commercial, the commercial, uh.
Guide.
Use, you're not gonna get it.
Is this anywhere near the old shoe store, the old shoe?
You know where the big thing is, that you drive underneath, the overpass, in order to do it, it's across the street just before it.
The shoe, I think the shoe store was across the street, Paul, so.
You mean with Bernie, uh, where Nicole had the press company?
Yeah.
Bariant Press.
That's. Bariant Press is almost directly across the street.
Across the street.
Diagonally, right?
Right.
So you've got just a little history, so this.
How many get two garages on?
This garage has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it's, no, 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 Paulie, it's that, it's the building with the, with the walkway in front of it, from, from there down.
Right, from there down.
Mm-hmm.
Right, there used, just past that, there used to be like an old shed and building that got demoed when they, uh, did the viaduct. Behind Feldman's.
Behind Feldman's. The one down the bottom is behind Feldman's, the one we gave the guy with the garage in front.
But, orientation from the top, right, so. Use variances are difficult, I, I'll, I'll be completely honest with you.
What you had is. We used to have in that white house on the left there, that used to be a beauty parlor, and next to that, the yellow house, used to be a bakery.
So thirty-six, that's thirty-six, was the beauty parlor.
Yeah, and then two, two houses up from that, it used to be the bakery, the yellow house.
Ten, ten to fourteen Vineyard, which is.
Yep.
The, uh, going back down the hill, used to be a tavern, and that became apartments.
Okay.
But it.
But we're just.
So when you get, when you get into this area, into this zone.
Yep.
There's no businesses there anymore.
No, there's not.
There's nothing, I mean, you get past, you get past where, where, uh, the, the laundromat used to be.
That's it.
And that, that's it.
There's no parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, and I know this isn't, this isn't the forum, but, I mean, this may be something our next tri board, which is coming up fairly soon. This is something we can, we can put out there and say, you know, this is, this doesn't really work.
This building, when I first started, ten, ten years ago or so, we were there because we had a complaint about the building itself, so Dave Barton and I went, the, the two doors that are, it's this door here. And I think it's this door here, go into those two downstairs suites, there's no floors, they're completely, they were completely gone, the owner of that building started to demo it and make, do work, most of the inside of that building is all demoed.
All floors or just the first floor?
Only one apartment, somebody was living.
It's part, part.
Oh, wow.
This upstairs apartment on a, on a, we're gonna call it the third floor, was, somebody was living in there, that's the only rental this guy had.
Okay.
But he had started, and that's ten, that's about ten years ago now, so, uh, this gentleman came in and bought it and realizing that it's three-story.
Yep.
It, A, is gonna have a full sprinkler system in it, he wants to do it right.
Mm-hmm.
No fire escape, sprinkler, sprinkler system, full fire alarm system, so, um, the condition it's in now, and what he's proposing to do to it, it's gonna put it back in the tax rules and make us, you know, for.
Which is all excellent, but really bad for what you're looking to do.
Right, but you got it, so, there is some history to that, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. I think, I think we, we move forward, we get, we get our attorney in.
Okay.
In contact with you, we move this forward, I'd like to, to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the eleventh. Bill, can I get a second? Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got one thing, the best thing for you to do.
Mm-hmm.
That we do it, where most, everybody comes in this situation, is go get a tax map.
Oh, mm-hmm.
Okay, of all the lots on both sides of the street, and you color in which ones are residential.
Okay.
Which ones are commercial, and the board picks that right up, very quickly, it's visual.
Okay.
And it shows you feeling of the neighborhood, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, most of us all live here in long time, so.
Except for Paul, he's new.
No. I mean, I just like to ask, isn't that building attached in the back to the two garage apartment?
No, it's a separate building.
I thought, I thought all the way in the back there, it was attached in the back, there was a breezeway, there was a deck originally, and then they made it a breezeway.
So in the back, so in the, when you go to.
You know what I mean? See the two garages there in that, that building?
The old stair, this is an old picture, this staircase that's here, is now right here where the dumpsters are, when you go into the staircase and you go between these two buildings, this building and this building are owned by the same landlord. You go up the stairs, when you go to the back of the, when you go all the way to the top, there's an apartment that's on your left, and then there's a, like a, um, a patio, a wooden patio that backs right up to that building, to this building.
Okay, so it's the next building.
It's the next building, yeah, it's, when you walk up there, it's confusing.
Okay.
Who, what's what, what's what there?
So as, as we're going through this process, um.
Take board.
We're gonna, Anthony, myself, the board, w- we're gonna discuss it sort of with the town board, sort of informally.
Okay.
It, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't, it's not, it's not good streetscape, and it's, in my opinion, it's not good planning to keep this as CB with the regs that it, that it has now. But again, we, we'll discuss that.
Right.
You know, so we're, we're actually gonna take it down two different avenues simultaneously.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Yep.
Thank you very much, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Um, I just ran into one, saw her, this property was commercial.
Mm-hmm.
She posted it for a year to get a use variance for the property change.
Mm-hmm.
She proved that she couldn't, uh, do nothing with the property for a year, couldn't get no economic thing, only for residential.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't take the commercial away, it slashed, commercial, resident, residential, didn't say what floor it had to be on, or whatever, the property now, still commercial, but still went to residential, but it could be either. You understand, so.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I understand completely.
So downstairs apartments, if we keep it CB with apartments on the first floor.
Right, well, that, that's what I'm saying, change.
In another ten years.
Change, change the regs or put an overlay.
But you're still gonna have a problem with parking.
Well, across the street is parking, there's a, like a lot off the street.
Right.
Right across the street from this.
No, straight across.
Straight across.
Oh, okay, with the.
With the viaduct.
Joe, 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 Joe Giappani's house, he took down and they made a apartment.
So, um, minutes to approve.
Right, so. There you go, there's the parking.
Right. And that's all, that's all right away, that's not private, that's right away, it's parking.
So the one guy, just so you know, not all those cars that are there, just FYI. This car, this car, this car, and I think this one are all owned by the guy that lives directly across the street, this thing's been sitting here for him.
Yeah.
Okay.
So these are all his cars.
Yeah, can't.
Well.
Is that a right away?
You know, and again, that's not our, that's not our deal, but, you know, a- as, as a society, we're trying to move towards more, uh. Environmentally friendly modes of transportation, I know that there's bus service that goes through there, the UCAT goes through there, you know, you, you take apartments, small like this, not a lot of parking. It's not a bad thing for a young couple or an elderly couple that has bus service, they can get to the train station if they need to for commuter, you know.
They can walk into town.
I, I just, I don't see, I, I don't, I don't see that being. I, I just, I don't see, I, I don't, I don't see that being conducive to business down there, but again, that's, that's a discussion for.
Yeah, it was, when I was a kid, there was a lot of action down there, we had a candy store on the corner, a, a, a regular grocery store on the bottom of Grand Street, uh, Vineyard Avenue, right there on, uh, Grand Street, um.
Yeah, yeah, right at the corner, right, where, where it comes out, there, there used to be a bar there too, right?
Across the street.
Back in the day.
Bill's Tavern.
Bill's Tavern, mhm.
Been at that many times by the aisles.
Man, I'm getting old.
The old rotten eggs in the jar.
All right, so, administrative, minutes to approve, um, I've read the minutes from our last meeting.
So did I.
They were well-written, reflective of the events, like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Have a second?
Bill seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most important meal of the day, like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I gotta go home, I'm never playing.
Paulie?
Yeah, adjourn.
Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, see you in a month.